Well, Gord, thank you so much for joining me.
Thank you for having me, Carlin.
Absolutely. And you know, the thing that I say to everybody and now also for you, because now it's not just just running because you are running for reelection. So we do appreciate anybody that steps up to represent this town to, you know, like how many, is this, is this your second term? That you're running for? Or is this your third?
This would be my second term.
Your second term. Okay. So yeah, obviously you're, you didn't mind it the first time. So you're willing to go back and try it again. Hey?
Well, it's the trying to figure out the what's, the why's, the hows, the how comes. And being in business, the hardest thing I had to learn was the speed of government is six, 12, 18, 24 months. Cause if I say something in business, it's done today.
Right.
So it took me a while to get used to that, but it's, it's the understanding of what is going on in the community.
Yes, absolutely. So Gord, we're going to follow the, the format that we followed with everybody else. Uh, we're going to ask you the seven questions, then we're, uh, once we're done the seven questions, we'll go back and dissect the things that you said. So first off, uh, can you tell us a little bit about yourself? And what is motivating you to run again for Oketoks Town Council?
Well, I've been a resident of Oketoks for 30 plus years. I've met my wife here, raised our three daughters here. I've lived in most of the province at times and Oketoks is home. When I drive into Oketoks, it feels like home. Um, the people are friendly. It's still got that small town attitude that attracts everyone to it. What made me want to redone rerun? Um, there's a couple of things I'd like to see get done. When I first ran the first time, I wanted to reduce the red tape on for businesses to get started here. We've, we've accomplished that or a portion of that, but there's always something we can do. And I can't wait to see the supplementary water pipeline finished and completed.
Absolutely. Cause that certainly is a, is a big win for the current council. That's for sure. What is your vision for Oketoks over the next four years? And what role do you see yourself playing in helping achieve that vision?
I'd like to see Oketoks, the downtown community. Since we've gone through the summer of construction on roads, I'd like to see what the new downtown will look like. And also want to attract more businesses to town. Get rid of the, or bring the gap between non-residential taxes and residential taxes closer together. Four years ago, it was 14% non-residential. We gained 2% in four years. So it's something that doesn't happen over time. I'd like to see us get to that 80, 20 split. Also get the new high school built up in, um, up in Wetterburn. So and stuff like that. I'd like, and like I said, the wat- the supplementary water pipeline. I'd like, I want to see that up and running. But with that, I don't want it just because we have water, we're not going to let growth go crazy. I still think we have to use controlled growth. So we don't outgrow our means.
That's, that's a good point. We'll certainly come back to that one. In your view, what are the top two or three issues facing Oketoks right now? And how would you approach them if elected?
The, one of them is transportation. As I said before, with all the construction that was going on, um, it gave us a chance to look at some of our arteries that need to maybe be widened. For instance, 32nd Street. It gives us a chance to look at the main street and how we can accomplish that. Also, I'd like to see us, um, like I say, the school built, um, the recreation center expansion. It's time for, um, getting a new pool. It's time to keep some of these athletes that are here training so that it's always cool to have someone from Oketoks representing Oketoks and they're training here.
Again, we certainly do have a, a good swimming program. So they're, um, they're on my hit list, hit, hit list to talk to them for, uh, on the podcast. Cause it's, uh, some pretty great stories coming out of there. So, uh, Oketoks continues to face challenges around growth, housing and infrastructure. How do you believe the town should balance development with maintaining its character and livability?
Well, last, or last year, our growth rate was 1.8%. We'd set a, a marker for a 4% increase in 26. And that's all relevant to the water pipeline. If the water pipeline's not there, it, um, which will be there. So that's not it. But we've got levers to control the amount of growth. Um, each developer has to, um, purchase a water allocation permit. And if they, if there's no water in the system, or if they don't have that purchase, they can't open up that new subdivision, or they can't open up that new part of their development. We also have to, like I said, keep looking at traffic, traffic patterns.
Absolutely. The, uh, just going, just a quick question. So that water allocation systems permit, um, will that be going forward as well with the, once we have the new pipeline?
Yes, it's cause it's, it's a way for us to control and work with the developers. So they can't just go and open up 15 areas in this one area. They've got to go phase by phase by phase. So.
For sure. Many residents want more transparency and involvement in decision-making. How would you ensure residents' voices are heard and represented at council?
That's a good one. Cause I always, I like it when people come into council, into chambers, because there's open delegation. They can come and speak. I know that I have the phone number, um, emails. I do answer every email that is sent to me, even if it's, um, on the council one. The number one thing that we really did as a council, last time, we did a council connector. So we would go to different venues or different spots and we would say, councils here, come and talk to us. We were at the recreational center. One day we were at a Oilers game. We were at a dogs game. We were at the parade. So we're out and about where the people are. So. And previous councils before that, you never saw anyone other than virtually the mayor. So we were, we mandated ourselves to be out in the public at different functions.
Absolutely. Town council works as a team and also with foothills county and the province. How does your approach with collaboration and compromise get results for Oketoks?
Well, if, if we, if you have more voices, you get more, you, you get more, the squeaky wheel gets the grease is what I'm going to say. By having more collaborations with everyone, that's how we got the supplementary water pipeline is the county worked in collaboration with us to get the supplementary water pipeline. Another one is the foothills Oketoks recreational center or society, which is the field house. They work together on that. Um, the county and the town have an inter municipal county or committee, and they meet every two months to discuss what's going on in each of our areas. And I, I have worked with the provincial government, um, and the federal government too. It's, so we have to work together, but we have to protect our own.
For sure. How do you, so just going back and dissecting a few things that you said here, like, how do you see the town promoting itself, um, to businesses to set up shop in the area?
Well, I know what we did is we started economic development group and they, they go out and they work with the businesses. But new businesses can go to them and get, um, a feeling for what's going on. And they, they also, if someone is inquiring, they get involved. The chamber also helps with us to, to, to see what, what businesses we can get and where we can go.
Okay. Did you say that you were hoping to, like, last year was a 1.8% growth rate? Is that what you said? And then in 2020, in 2026, we're looking at a 4% growth rate, depending on the water line?
Depending, depending on them. Yeah.
Okay. So it's funny because everybody thinks, oh my gosh, we're growing so fast. But you know, we, you know, we're not in comparison to Cochrane, Airdery, Chesmir, all those other outlined towns. We've slowed down and obviously it's because of the pipeline. You also said that, um, the growth rate, you don't want to go crazy. But if everybody thinks that 1.8%, everything's going crazy. What's gonna, what's everybody going to think at 4% uh, in 2026?
The problem is everyone sees, cause most of the developments right along the, the two-way highway. And everyone sees that and they think it's all going to be filled up in 35 seconds. Well, it's not. It's, it's over a period of years. Um, like 1.28% is a hundred and some houses. So, um, or 1.8 is a hundred and some houses roughly give or take. 4%, so you, you can do the maths and 4% you'd be, I'm just going to say about two, 200 or 300 houses.
Sure. Okay. 300 houses. Yeah. So for sure. So obviously growth is the concern. What, what I find funny, I guess, uh, is that some people like, how long have you been here? Oh, I've been here two years, but I don't want, I don't want it to grow anymore. Right? I, I wanted to stay that just, we moved here because of the fact that, you know, uh, it's, it's funny because I hear that. I've heard that a lot in the last little while. But obviously keeping the small town feel is, is very, very important. And I think people are okay with almost anything, just as long as it doesn't affect them. So how do, how do we juggle all that? And you know, we want, we, you know, we, we're saying we don't want the growth, but the growth has to, has, is inevitable. Like, how are you guys juggling that as a, as a council right now?
Well, you can't stop progress, right? And if you, if you think we could stop growth, we're just going to hurt ourselves in the long run. We would see, we'd become landlocked around the county. You would see all these subdivisions come up around the county and we would, we would lose our identity to, to grow. And how can we control that? Well, you work with the developers too, right? The developers have to, they have to, um, get all the services in. They have to get all that in. And they have to, they're paying for that. So we have, if you're collaborating with them, that helps too, that, you know? And then we can work together. We can control what is out there.
Yeah, absolutely. I felt a little nervous asking you a question number five about transparency, because I know that that's, uh, yeah, it's certainly a, a big thing for people, it seems like, but all the information is certainly there, isn't it? Like, if I want to find out, if I want to go into the archives and look at a council meeting from six years ago, I could find information. If I pushed it a little bit, I'd be able to get that information, right?
Yeah. You just go on the town website and you can pull up any of the, any of the old minutes from the meetings and it'll tell you who voted for what and what was this, the, um, what was the situation going on? So it's all there. It's not, we don't, we haven't hid anything from everyone. I know there's this myth that people thought that we, um, we all voted on the same and a lot of stuff was, wasn't there. But we all, we have our own opinions. We're all different people.
Yeah. I, and I haven't dove into it, but I did hear somebody say that the, the agreement level on the current council was like 96% or something, very, very little fireworks, I guess, or opposing any kind of motion or anything. Can you, can you talk that out a little bit for us?
So by the time it gets to the council chamber, to that meeting, it usually goes through a governance and priority meeting or committee. And, and that's all council members. And that's where everything is gone over. And that's where the majority of the debating is. And so by the time it gets to council, it's already been debated. And administration has been so good at giving us all the viewpoints of, um, this is what it could be. This is what it should be. And then we get to make our own decision.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Um, while with the, the voter turnout of 36%, that means 64% of Oketokians can't complain, right? Is that right?
That's, and you know what? That was my, my thing when I first decided to run, um, four years ago. You can't, you don't have the right to complain until you've put your neck on the line.
Right. Yeah. No, absolutely. So, no, and you know, just, just coming back to the question that I kind of missed with the whole growth thing is, is when you say, we're not going to go crazy with growth. Like we want controlled growth. Like what, what do you envision when you say things like that?
Well, when I say that, we're not gonna, like I say, um, each, each of the development, development areas have zones in them, right? So we're not going to let them go zone one, two, three, four, five, six in all three areas. They're going to have to go through zone one, zone two, and then we're not going to over, overbuild for, because you still got to get the infrastructure into these areas before you can do that.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah. And I think you're right. The, the visibility of the 1.8% growth was right on two A there as you leave town, right? And that's, I think is the, the exposure. So, what are, like, what are some of the things that you love about Oketoks? Like what, what do you do in your spare time? What are, you know, what's?
You know, going to, I, in the summertime, I love going to the dogs ballgames. Cause that's a great way to meet people and talk to people. I'm an avid golfer, but not a great golfer. Um, so that's another thing I like to do. And I have, one of my daughters is a rodeo girl. So I, I, we go to the rodeo and I watch her go 14 seconds fast on, on a horse and.
Yeah. No, that's awesome. No, it is, uh, certainly a, a great place to live. And how do you, how do you think you being a business owner, um, enhances your job as a town counselor?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not the owner, but, um, it's a family-run business. So, um, and I grew up, we owned a small grocery store in a small town. So I've always been around business. It gives, gives a different perspective of the dollars and cents. And I'm a big believer if, if, if you have a dollar, you don't have to spend it, but you have to be responsible with it. So if you're, you just don't spend just for the fun of spending.
Right, right. For sure. So as a current council member, it seems like there's a lot of people that are running on the platform of let's freeze taxes, let's not increase taxes anymore. Let's, uh, stop, you know, stop any new development or anything like how, what are your thoughts on that? Because I think you're, you'll be able to add a unique perspective to that.
Well, with, with that, if you, in COVID, they went to 0% increase for two years. We had to make up for that because it's service levels. If your service levels aren't up to that standard of what the, the people expect, people want this, the roads plowed in the winter time. We want to know that we have enough firemen on staff. We want to know that we have enough Oketoks municipal enforcement on staff. Four years ago, we didn't have enough firemen to staff, staff a shift, which is a scary thought, you know? And we, so we increased that to get those people hired. And same with Oketoks municipal enforcement. We didn't have a lot. We needed to get more. So they're out on the streets and doing what we need to do to keep our town safe and secure. You know, and people came up, um, we have all these service levels that have been set by the town. We don't want to go backwards. Like it's cutting the grass on the boulevards. It's the pathways. I'm cleaning the, the pathways off. There's almost a hundred kilometers of pathways. Cleaning off some of the pathways in the winter, for winters, so people can get around. So those are the things that service levels and you have to watch with the taxes.
For sure. So like, like, have you guys been kind of tweaking that a little bit, trying to find ways to save money with the, the grass cutting and all that stuff? Like maybe not cutting the grass every seven days. We'll cut it every 10 days now, or just as an example.
Yeah. The parks works really well with us to say that this area doesn't need to be cut or, um, there is a service level of the amount of snow that's on the pathways that if it's below an inch or 2.54 centimeters, the sweeper will go out. If it's above that, then the plow will go out. So it's not always the same, the same set standard. This is what we have done on Monday. We're going to do it on Tuesday. It's, it's, it's flexible and changeable.
Right, for sure. And, and no doubt, like a year this year, uh, usually by mid-July, things are starting to dry up and you're good to go. You probably maybe one or two more cuts and you know, you call it a year almost, right? But this year, uh, like I've never seen the dog park. So like, it was a forest out there. There was mushrooms out in the dog park, right? So, so it's certainly hard to, can you help, help us understand how that balance works out? Because you have this company that's, that's hired. I know of me, if I wanted to hire a company to remove my, remove the snow and cut my grass, that it's a flat fee, uh, that I would pay. Like, how does that work with the grass cutting and snow removal? Is it just because no doubt you have these people that are staffed, but is it the fuel costs? Is it the, like, let's say we get like an unbelievable amount of snow this year where it snows every second day, like a foot. What are we? Obviously our budget then increases?
Well, you, you have to take the budget and you have to do it over a period of time. So you can't say like this year, um, it rained almost all of July. So grass cutting wasn't going as much as it would be if, if you didn't have that much rain. Last winter, we didn't have snow for the first part of the winter. So, um, but you do have to have a budget that it's predicted over a period of time. It can't just be, well, this year we're going to spend X amount of dollars. Well, if you go on a 10-year budget cycle or whatever, then that way you know, okay, in the 10 years, we've had X, X amount of centimeters of snow and X amount of, um, millimeters of rain. So you have to use, you have to use some science into it too, right?
Yeah, no, absolutely. For sure. How do you guys, uh, like, I, I know, and it was a little bit, uh, it wasn't fair really what transpired this, this summer in regards to, because all these projects, all these construction projects all kicked off at once and you're, and, and our construction season is so small. And so there's a lot of inconveniences. How do you guys, um, once construction is not a problem, that we have traffic issues like, what, what are the things that the town are doing to, to listen to the concerns of the people regarding traffic?
Well, actually just today I was driving up 32nd, um, from, um, Seaman Stadium to the, the HTA school. And if you look on the light standards at every one of the, um, signals, there's monitoring stations were put up this week to monitor the number of traffic, amount of traffic going on that road. So we can do that. There is another tool, um, that, that, that the town uses to monitor. It's, it's a, um, the name slips my mind right now, but, um, it's a way to relegate or say this intersection is a dangerous one, or we need to put some traffic signals here. There, there is tools in, in the toolbox that the town uses to do that. And if, if a residence comes and says, we, the speed on this road, I did meet with some residents on, um, I just lost the name of that last year. And they, they asked if we could put a temporary stop sign up just to slow down people and it's still up. So, um, so there is, there's all those avenues to do that.
Yeah, for sure. The, the, the cameras that are on the intersections, like, you know, no doubt they read that there's a vehicle there. So they turn over. Do those, do those kind of keep track of the, the volumes of traffic as well or no?
There's a, there is a, I just asked this question before I got on with you too, to, to the town. There is a, um, meter at the middle of it that's taken all the readings of, of flows and times. So we'll know more of how flows and times can go.
So listener, if you're, uh, listening and you want to get 32nd doubled, you just need to like, kind of hit the, those signals every, uh, 24 times a day, just to, no, I'm joking, joking. It's a joke. It's a joke.
But the, but the best thing about that, and you said about collaboration in one of your questions before. So if we were going to expand 32nd, we'd have to put in another bridge. Well, a bridge becomes a federal issue, right? Because it's crossing the water. So there's, there's another aspect of collaboration there. And we have to use Alberta transportation for, for doing the roads.
Yeah, for sure. For all the roads?
Well, not all the town roads. So I would say the one at the end of 32nd, um, at 3, 338.
And not like, cause that area would be annexed. So that, how does that come into play? Even the annex road and those majors? Because there's still so-called secondary highways?
I did the secondary highway from, from highway two to two A, right?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Yeah. A lot of different, uh, channels to, to jump through. So what's, uh, what's going on with the, I know there was a, going to be a sound, you know, vehicle volume, kind of a test. What, what did that happen this summer? Did that go on or?
They got it or Oketoks municipal enforcement got the equipment. They had to go through training. The training was complete. Um, I believe it was in July. And I don't know if they've taken it out and used it yet, but they were going to go and use it. Cause they only have a couple of members that are certified in it.
Yeah, for sure. This past, uh, well, week, we had a unfortunate event with a, a shooting in town, which is, uh, yeah, obviously we don't want that to become a common practice and in crime, like crime seems to be, uh, like I had my vehicle stolen last September, uh, even last night on Facebook, um, you know, seeing a guy on video cameras, like, and these people don't really seem to care. They know everybody has cameras, but they're still going up to houses, checking, making sure, seeing if there's anything in the vehicles. But what's, what's the strategy on crime? What are you guys talking about, about the future and how we can really make this continue to keep this community safe?
I know as, as a council, we get a report from OME, RCMP and the fire service quarterly on what's going on and where they're, they're going. We do, they do, um, fill us in on all the activities. You know, once they've done the investigation, because if it's a, it's an ongoing investigation, they're not going to, no one's going to divulge anything, right? It's, it, it's a scary thing, crime, but, um, people need to, there is, um, citizens on patrol still around. They're probably looking for volunteers. Um, and people can report stuff to Oketoks Municipal Enforcement and the RCMP and they'll, they'll react to it right away.
Yeah, that's actually, uh, cause Al Weeb, I think I've mentioned him three times in talking to counselors about citizens on patrol, but, uh, I, I certainly would, uh, yeah, I think I need to reach out to Al Weeb and get, uh, you know, a podcast with him, because I think that's something that keeps us, like, almost like a nosy neighbor program, right? Citizens on patrol, right? Like what's, what's going on?
The more, um, publicity they can get, they're always looking for volunteers, right? You know, we can get them more volunteers, then it's not so hard on the four, or five, or six people that are doing it.
Yeah, for sure. No, that's awesome. Gord, is there anything that you want to leave the people of Oketoks with?
You know what? Um, I want them to know that I'm honest, reliable, hardworking. Um, and I said it earlier, Oketoks is my home. So I still like to go to a place where you can open the door and someone says hi. No one closes the door on you. So I still like that. I like seeing that my kids can be, well, they're young adults now. Can walk around town, walk and, and see people.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Like, uh, like my kids take off, you know, they're, you know, even up to a few years ago, they started to do that where they take off on their bikes and they're going to 7-Eleven. I always get nervous with them crossing certain roads or whatever, but, um, I, it typically, you're not afraid of the people. You're afraid of the traffic in the neighborhood for your kids. And, uh, a lot of, a lot of distracted drivers out there these days, right? So a lot of, you know, missing pedestrians and all that stuff. So that's the thing that made me nervous. But yeah, that's also the thing that we love about this town. I just feel that there's so many, like, out of the people that are running for council, there's so many people that are passionate about this town. There's so many people that have moved here because they love this town and we want to keep it special. We don't, like, I've shared with other people that I've interviewed for council, um, I hate going into Seton and right now there's parts of, uh, North Oketoks there where it's just like, ah, we're getting that Seton feel where we're just packing people in like sardines. And, um, that's part, you know, you look at Drake Landing and just how beautiful Drake Landing is and most of the houses back on the green spaces. And I know communities like that. Are they, are they a thing of the past? Are they, are they a thing of the past? Like, do the developers not want to come in and develop a community like that because uh, because of the amount of green space? I don't, I don't know, but, and, and that's kind of, that's kind of too bad, because I don't live in Drake Landing myself. But when my kids were younger, we usually ended up in Drake Landing with all the paths and all the playgrounds and all that stuff.
And you know what? Dealing with the, the different developers and seeing what they're doing, they're still keeping the green space. And some of these um, multifamily units were designed to, because there's an affordability issue. The young, young kids can't afford to buy a house, they can't, but they need to have a place to live. And I'd love to keep them here in Okatoks instead of sending them off to the city. So um, we have to have a diverse, diversified housing mark, or diversified housing system.
Yeah, yeah, and with the, 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 the growth rates so far behind and what's going on. Like, right now, Okatoks is a little bit of an anomaly when it comes to real estate, because the prices are still strong, people still want to move here. Yeah, we've seen a little bit of a decrease, but I think in some areas, we're certainly higher than Calgary.
I think we have to pay for the services that we like and the freedom that we have here. The, the fresh air, the, the open spaces, the river valley, the mountains, you can look out to the west and you can see the mountains.
I know, no, I was, it was, I, I went for a rundown to the River Valley today, and it's spectacular with all the changing colors and the ri- the river's finally clean, like, it's clear today.
It's clear, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, you can see the fish, so. Well, my friend, thank you for your time, thank you for your service to this town, and um, we do appreciate it, appreciate that there's people willing to step up like yourself to um, to serve this community, so thank you.
Carlin, thank, thank you very much for doing this, this is a great way to, to meet new people, and thank you for letting me talk.
Yeah, no, absolutely, well, we'll have you on again.
Awesome, anytime, sir.
Okay, right on, thanks, Gord.
Thanks.
Bye bye.